We will call our, that was kinda weak. We will call our meeting to order tonight. Roll call please.
Evans?
Here.
English?
Here.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Gugan?
Yo.
Miller?
Here.
McEvers?
Let's rise for our invocation, we have Pastor Pace Hartfield from the One Place Church.
Could you pray with me? Father, thank you so much for another day that you've given us. Thank you for the turn of weather. Thank you for sunshine. And I thank you for this night. I thank you for the city council for how they serve this city. Thank you for such a phenomenal city that we get to raise our families in. And we pray for tonight and pray for the agenda. Father, I pray for your favor and your blessing on it. I pray for wisdom and discernment as we go through each item. God, give us the wisdom to lead well and to make great decisions for this city. I thank you for how this council has served this city. And Father, I pray that you will continue just to protect them, bless them, and I pray that tonight would just help our city be even more prosperous. Help our city be all that it can be under your leadership. And we pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. What do you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So amendments to the agenda. I believe that we do have an addition to the consent calendar. So we're looking for some action on an amendment to add this to the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for to add to the agenda consent calendar 17-026, lease agreement with NIC in the armory building by adding it to the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to add that item as an amendment to the consent calendar. We have any further discussion on that?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm just gonna vote against this because I don't think these items could be postponed to a later time and give them for more vetting.
All right. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not gonna vote to put that on consent either because I had felt there were too many questions about that, so.
The lease?
Can we move it to the next calendar meeting or?
I will second that if that's a motion.
Can we just, can we move it off of there and discuss it now? Move it off of the consent and have that discussed as a separate item?
Yeah, you just still have one open motion on the table.
Okay. So we do have a motion and a second to add that to the consent calendar. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
So it is moved then to the consent calendar.
And we can still pull it off the consent calendar.
You bet.
All right.
So now we will move to presentations. And we have a gentleman that we found in the city of Coeur d'Alene that's actually served longer than Ron. And Brad, if you'd come to the podium and maybe is Hillary? Is Hillary here? Hillary, if you could come up too. And then we, Brad is just retiring from the planning commission after 30 years, so that would mean you would've started in 1987 on the planning commission. So you've seen a lot of growth in the city of Coeur d'Alene and you've been involved in a lot of decisions that have seen Coeur d'Alene grow through the time. And so we have a plaque for you in recognition. It just says, "The city of Coeur d'Alene proudly recognizes Brad Jordan for 30 years of invaluable service with the city of Coeur d'Alene Planning Commission." So Brad, thank you for 30 years of service to our city. Thank you very much.
Should that be valuable or invaluable? I don't get the difference.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Why don't you sum up your three years? You've got three minutes left. Thank you, Hillary. Well, you know, like they say, time flies. It's amazing how fast the 30 years went by. And, you know, being a Coeur d'Alene guy that grew up here and has been lucky enough to live here all my life, I like being involved in the city. And this really is a phenomenal city, as the pastor said. And, you know, I've seen a lot of changes over the years. And I think by far, most of them are for the positive. And so I appreciate the opportunity to serve on the planning and zoning commission. I've had a chance to work with some great staff at the city. There's always been top-notch people in the staff at the city and some great people that are former staff at the city. I've had the opportunity to get to know as well as council people and some great people that are just the greatest people you'd find in the community that have served on the planning commission with me over the years and that currently still are, still were, I guess, as of a couple days ago when my term expired. And so, and several of them came down tonight. And I appreciate you taking some time out of your evening to come down. So anyway, I thank you very much. It's been great to be involved in the planning and zoning commission and involved in the community. And I've really enjoyed being able to be involved in it. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Can we find out if he's at least gonna stay on the parking commission or?
I think that's a lifetime appointment.
Oh, okay.
Amy?
I just wanted to say congratulations to Brad. I had the honor of serving on planning commission for six and a half to seven years with him. And he was a great mentor to me and a great leader to our community. So thank you and congratulations on 30 great years.
Thank you.
There should be cake.
Okay, we'll move on now. We'll move on to the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move for approval of the consent calendar minus the NIC agreement.
So we have a motion to approve the consent calendar. We are gonna pull off the approval of the lease agreement separately and have a separate discussion and vote on that. So the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? Roll call please, Renata.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gugan?
Aye.
English?
Yes.
So now the item that we have before us is the approval of the lease agreement with North Highland College for the armory property for a one-year term as recommended by Mike. And I think that Mike and also City Administrator Hammond had been working on that for a long time. Maybe you could give us a summation of the armory lease?
It's all Jim's fault. I think this is a situation and some of the details I may get corrected on, but there is an old armory that I'm not sure how it came to be, but it came into the hands of NIC some years back, given to NIC by the state. And under the terms of the grant to NIC, their hands are tied. They can't really sell it or they can't give it away. About the only way they could get it to us to use it, and they have no use for it anymore. They used to store, I went up there one time and rented a big raft. They used to store outdoor pursuits activities, equipment there. They don't have a use for it. And so I think Jim Hammond, who else was involved, negotiated lease with the president or with the NIC leadership for the city to get this building to be used. Parks can use it for storage of their equipment. It has a big fenced property, the property is fenced. So streets is getting tied, their space is getting tied out at their shop so they can put stuff there. I think water has the same issue, big outdoor stuff they'd like to store. So it's basically for a dollar a year, so nothing allowing us to use it. I think also there's other, some other people that might be interested in using some of the space. I haven't been in it for a long time. When I was in it before it, it's just warehouse space. It's not finished office space. But that's, I hope that's all correct, but correct me if I'm wrong.
All right. Questions for Mike on that? Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mike, I know that at some time we were thinking that they would give it to us. Can they just not give it to us?
Yeah, and it's something to do with the procedures about how they got it from the land board. And so it was, so I'm assuming it was state property and armory. I guess they kept arms there at one time, maybe for National Guard or something, way before our time. And so NIC has the use of it, but they don't have any need for that use, so.
I noticed now, one thing that concerned me was our lease supposedly started, yeah, April 1st. And now it's.
I think it was April 17th or something like that.
Yeah, the copy that we received in email had an April 1st date. And so are we gonna be adjusting our time on that? I mean, I know it's a dollar a year, but that's eight and a third cents.
I'll take that up with their attorney and send them a claim for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's something that got hung up on their, in their procedure, getting it back to us.
Other questions for Mike? Kiki, did you have some questions?
My only two were, so this is a one-year. Are we planning it's just gonna automatically renew every year? Is that what the lease indicates?
Yeah, it has a provision that it is a one-year lease, but it only terminates when one party gives notice. So it does keep going. But again, it's not, I don't think it's mission-critical space to our, what we do. It's just something that is there and we can make use of it right now.
Okay.
Ron?
I think Mr. Hammond might've had something to say. Did you, Jim?
Thank you, Your Honor and council. The only thing I wanted to share was a little more information on Councilman Gugan's question. If NIC no longer wishes to use the building, they cannot give it to us. They either have to use it or give it back to the state. And then it goes up for anybody, first at the state level, to take it. Under the provisions that we're providing to you, the city can lease it from NIC so that we can keep it in local hands and we can use it.
Sounds good.
That's a good deal.
Dan?
In our recent budget discussions, there was some talk about, you know, I think maybe for Street Department, but some future needs. Is this in any way going to offset that or?
No, that was actually the Water Department that's looking at expanding to a new facility. And this would not take care of those needs.
Any further questions for Jim or Mike? If not, we would be looking for council action then to approve the lease agreement with North Idaho College.
Aye, don't move.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the lease agreement with North Idaho College for the property of one year. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It has to be a voice, a roll call vote, right?
Sorry, it's a resolution. I need a roll call.
Okay, Renata, you can have it your way.
Thank you. Eddinger?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gugan?
Aye.
English?
Yes.
Motion carried. Now we'll move on to public comments. Anyone wishing to address the council on city business shall have three minutes to do so. First come, first served. Who would ever like to jump up first? A gentleman right there in front.
Hi, my name is Ray Moser. I live at 4823 West Mill River Court. And I'd like to present to the city council a petition of 12 of our neighbors that pay a total of $192,000 a year property tax. And we request that our money be spent more prudently than the expansion of the acquisition of Atlas property. I'm looking into your quote, that 1,900 feet of waterfront property. Well, property in our area, we have two people, property owners here, that bought 75-foot lots. And those lots are $750,000. So based on that 1,900 feet, you would have, you could have as much as 250 homes paying the same $20,000 a year. So you would have $5 million of revenue from the residents living in that place and you wouldn't have any outlay of capital. And I guess I ask, where's this $5.7 million coming from? If you have that much in abundance, why don't you rebate it to our taxes or do something else? I was at City Hall recently and I asked a member that's on the payroll here, why this acquisition and this urge to buy this property? And the response I was given was several people have come to City Hall and told us to buy waterfront property. And I'd simply like to know since when has somebody walked into City Hall and suggested, you know, you buy something, you run out and do it? Would you build me a swimming pool in my neighborhood? Or will you put one atop Mount, you know, Canfield Mountain if two or three people walk in and ask that? You know, we went to a presentation last October that in conjunction with Selties that said there were gonna be restaurants and everything down there. I just don't think that the city council and the city of Coeur d'Alene should be in the real estate business. I don't think you have business to buy that property and then try to recuperate your investment further. By buying that, you're gonna increase more city employees to run it. You can't get by with $7.5 million. It'll cost you 10 or 12 by the time you're finished. And if people aren't buying Atlas at current price, what makes you think you're gonna pay twice as much for the property so that you can recoup it? You know, I think that you should let private enterprise take its place. And I don't think that, or I think that our tax money could be spent much more prudently. It seems to me that each mayor and council wants to leave some kind of a legacy. And in the case of the previous administration, it cost 15 to 20 million dollars to have this park. And now this is next on the agenda. I'm just saying, where will it stop?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to come up for a public comment?
Good evening, Mayor, council. My name's Chet Gaddy. I'm the president of the Mill River Property Association, of which you just heard some members speak. And as you know, all your constituents probably don't agree with all the things that you say. I'm also a founding member of the Friends of the Spokane River Corridor. And we've been coming to you for about four years now, asking you to become proactive on the river corridor itself. And specifically, we're asking for zoning. We think this proposal to purchase the property is so much better than we were asking for that we would like to applaud in advance what we hope is your decision tonight. I remember sitting here a couple years ago when the decision was made to purchase the railroad right away through that property. And I specifically remember two of you saying, "Boy, I wish we could get the whole property." And it looks, seems to me as that seed has germinated and is now growing into what we think is a spectacular idea. So we support that. I would also like to offer the Friends of the Spokane River Corridor to help you and your staff in any way we can to engage the public in what's gonna be a long process to get that property back into the public domain, the private domain, and whatever it happens to is gonna be a long time coming because it is gonna be a public process and it's gonna take a lot of input. So we're offering our services and thanking you in advance for the decision.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council tonight?
Mayor and city council, my name is Chris Guganuss. I live in Coeur d'Alene. And I'm here tonight to speak about the item that's up for a vote, I believe, on getting the performing arts more involved with the grants. I own Handshake Productions, which has been under contract with the city of Coeur d'Alene since 1995 to stage the free concerts at Coeur d'Alene City Park. Do want to make clear that is a city of Coeur d'Alene event. They've just hired my company to produce it. I'm looking at what was the original Arts Commission ordinance that was created, I believe, back in the 1990s. And one of their charges was to, item A, to stimulate and encourage throughout the city and surrounding area the study and presentation of the performing and fine arts. It goes on another paragraph to state to contribute or help develop entertainment in many other phases, including music. Over the years, I have found a reluctance on the Arts Commission to contribute to the performing arts. They contributed in 2011 at the urging of Deanna Goodlander, who was the liaison to the Arts Commission at that time. But I was told at times when I, before Deanna helped, that when I'd call in about it, I was told there was no reason to even submit a grant because they would say no, that the Arts Commission was more in favor of the visual arts, public art. And so I want to just encourage the council to consider voting in favor of providing the opportunity for the performing arts to be considered when the Arts Commission is making decisions on grants. And I think it would help also to have on the Arts Commission, members of that commission who are supporters of the performing arts. I don't see that right now. I see, I just don't see a lot of love and support for the performing arts on there. That's the last thing regarding that. Another thing I would just like to ask the council, I can't hear you back there. I don't know if it's speaking into a microphone or if they need to turn it up. When Mr. Hammond just spoke, I could hear him clearly. So I don't know if it's getting, but I've noticed that over the years when I've come to city council meetings, I can't hear, so. Thank you very much.
Chris, I just wanna add, I'm the liaison to the Arts Commission currently. And I know the members of the commission are very excited about this ordinance that's on our agenda tonight because they are anxious to expand opportunities for the community, including performing arts.
Good.
So there really is a lot of energy behind that ordinance from the Arts Commission. So just put your mind at ease there. Yeah.
Right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to come and address the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ron?
Could somebody answer some of the questions that Mr. Moser asked or make some comments, what Mr. Moser asked?
I think those will be addressed in the presentation when we get to that, to that point, Ron. And then we can have some more discussion there too. And I think we have to keep in mind too is that tonight's isn't a decision to buy the property. Tonight's is a decision to enter in an agreement to research, which is gonna take several, several months to see if that's the proper thing for the city to do. So, but that'll come down a little later on in the agenda.
Okay.
All right, we will move on to announcements. Any member of the city council have an announcement tonight?
I'll go.
Go ahead, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So tonight, the county is holding their meeting on CityLink. And that's why no one's here. No, a lot of people are here. But CityLink has become a kind of an interesting issue. I'm on the KMPO board and CityLink gives presentations to us. And one of the things they're discussing tonight is not the transit center. It's changing their routes. They're trying to go from their two routes to three routes. They're also gonna stop the Saturday and Sunday service. And I just want to let everyone know that I wrote an email to the Board of Commissioners and asking them to maintain the Saturday and Sunday service because there are people who do ride the bus on Saturday and Sunday. And I think that the CityLink, the county who administers CityLink should focus on fulfilling their current mission statement and not trying to keep expanding the system just to expand the system. So I just want to let everyone know that I did that. Otherwise, I would be there telling them that in person.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Kiki?
I just have three things I'm working on, kind of on behalf of the city. This coming Saturday is Coeur d'Alene Summer Theater's fundraiser, Dancing with the Celebrities event at the Coeur d'Alene Casino. So there, I'm a big supporter of the performing arts, so I'll be involved in that. And next week, the.
Wait a second, are you dancing?
I, yes. So next week, you do vote by funding them. In case anybody wants to go to the website, that's how it works. But next week is National Women Build Week. So it's a fundraising and recognition week for Habitat for Humanity. Chris, can you hear me? Am I turning my head? Is that what's causing the microphone? You can hear me? Okay. So I'll be doing some work with them on the 9th. And then on the 18th, I'll be working for the Domestic Violence Prevention Awareness Breakfast with Safe Passages. So there's a lot of important causes out there and I'm happy to be involved in as many as I can.
Thank you very much.
Good for you.
Anyone else have any announcements? I do have an appointment. I would like to appoint Kathleen Schreiner to the Child Care Commission, so I'd be looking for council action.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Move on to general services. We have resolution number 17-027, approval of amendments to the art, the public art policy. Sam Taylor?
Thank you, Your Honor and members of the council. Tonight before you are consideration of two different things. One is modification amendment to the city's public art ordinance itself as well as then a resolution adopting changes to the public art policy. And the basic reason for these changes is to expand the, basically, the way we can fund art in our community. Since 1982, the city of Coeur d'Alene has had on the books an Arts Commission ordinance. And it's been sort of locked in place on focusing on those physical art projects because of the way we've set up what's called the Percent for the Arts program. 1.33% of qualifying public capital improvement projects are placed into a public art fund and art maintenance fund. And the way that's written is specifically related to public art. And that's why we have such an amazing collection of public art throughout the community, whether it be in our streetscapes, in our parks, or in our public facilities like the library. To date, we have an inventory of 149 different pieces of art in our community. We are looked at as one of the premier locations throughout the Northwest with this type of collection of public art. And we receive a lot of calls throughout the year about how we do it. And the answer is the Public Art Fund. The answer is Ignite Funding. And then when we get questions about, well, how do you support performing arts? The answer is, kinda can't right now. So really, that's what the changes are this evening. It's to expand it to allow the Arts Commission to really perform its full mission. When the city council adopted the Arts Commission in 1982, its mission was to encourage the development of our artistic and cultural life and to join with all persons and institutions concerned with the arts to ensure that the role of the arts in our community will grow and play an ever more significant part in the welfare and educational experience of the citizens of Coeur d'Alene. Say that five times fast. Among its duties, it's tasked with stimulating and encouraging the study and presentation of the performing arts. And it is supposed to work with all types of art institutions to support the arts. As I said, they've really been locked in from doing that. So the basics I've outlined in the staff report for you of both of these things that allow them to enhance that and really follow the mission as already adopted. Under chapter 1.4 of the Coeur d'Alene Municipal Code, art is no longer defined as only physical art. It includes arts education, performing arts, visual arts, community art partnerships, and public art programming. The Public Art Fund and Public Art Maintenance Fund are sort of combined. Really, there are a few things that are in the maintenance fund that would simply be moved to the Public Art Fund. Our arts education programming, the mayor's arts, or mayor's awards in the arts program would be moved over. While all public art funding would be within one pool of funds, for every project done, 15% of the art project's budget would need to be set aside into a maintenance line item. We really want to make sure that moving forward, we continue to have funding for the maintenance of that collection. As I noted, we have a fairly substantial one. So moving forward, basically, the way we would do it is we would say, we have a project worth X, 15% of that value, we're gonna also need to budget for that as well. And so we're gonna be able to do that through the budgetary. And so we're going to be able to do that through the budgetary process. There will be no questions about that. We'll know exactly what the items are moving forward. And it'll really help us, I think, budget in advance rather than after the fact. On top of that, then, we have a public arts policy that basically responds and adopts that art ordinance. It provides the guidelines for the Arts Commission in, in how they set up their meetings, how they set up their subcommittees and selection committees for our public arts, and outlines how we utilize the funding in those, those two programs. The changes to that policy to help us get to where we need to go include amending the Purpose Section to include advocacy for the arts education and to provide support for a diverse range of categories of art. The Arts Commission's Purpose Section includes a revised definition to acknowledge a role in seeking art partnerships and providing arts education, as it does now. A process is outlined for requests for qualifications, in essence, kind of creating a, a community grant program where we actually have a, a standard for how we do this. So we would seek applicants, we would have a specific pool of money, we would go through the selection process to determine who we would work with and partner with throughout that fiscal year. Sections on the public art fund and art maintenance fund are revised to recognize changes to the Percent for the Arts program. And then creation of selection panels for public art is revised to acknowledge how these temporary selection committees are actually constructed. So the makeup of those, as the old arts policy works, is not how they've been doing it for many, many years. We want to make sure that we're recognizing the, the structure of those selection committees, including additional members of the community, and how the city council is on, so, also provides a recommendation on one of the members of that selection committee. Clarifications provided for when and how a piece of public art might be moved to a different location. So most recently, we have that wonderful piece called Forks in the Road that has been hit twice because it's nearby the road by vehicles, and so we've been working to move it to a better location to protect it. It is a bike rack. We hope, we hope people actually utilize it as a bike rack moving forward. And so that's pretty much it. In terms of financial impact, there's not much of an impact. All this is doing is simply expanding to allow the Arts Commission to carry out the full mission as adopted for it by the city council in 1982. And with that, I stand for questions.
Questions for Sam? Kiki?
Sam, would you just maybe mention Jennifer Drake was at General Services, and she was explaining that the Arts Commission had worked through the language of this, was very, very supportive, and was very enthusiastic about moving forward with this, and that it was a unanimous type of feeling?
Absolutely. Yeah, for, for several years, we've heard from, from the city council, from the Arts Commission, and the arts community that folks really want to see this expansion. They really want us to make sure that we're embracing the full mission of the commission, and they are extremely excited to support additional types of art in the community. It's been a struggle for them each year when, when arts organizations come to them and, and have fantastic ideas for projects, whether it be the, the recent Out of the Shadows, I hope I'm saying that correctly, Out of the Shadows Theater. It was at the Crocs Center, and it allowed disabled students and adults to perform in a theater production, and they had shadow actors behind them doing that. We would have loved to, to work with them to see if a partnership would work, but the arts ordinance as currently written doesn't allow for funding. We've had musicians and buskers and things like that come to us and say, we'd love to partner. The arts ordinance simply prohibits those types of things from happening. Knowing that the city council has provided direction to start this process, we've been working to also expand the Arts Commission to add members from those other types of, of art. So recently, we adopted, the city council adopted an amendment to the ordinance, providing that a member of the Arts and Culture Alliance, which has over 600 arts organizations as members, is a standing voting member of the Arts Commission. Most recently, the mayor nominated and you approved nominations for two new members of the Arts Commission, one of those being Greg Lewis, who himself is a musician and is really excited to continue to talk about potential outdoor performing arts, busking and stuff like that. So we've really been prepping the, the Arts Commission and this policy adoption for this very thing tonight. Everyone is very excited to do this, and, and really, the commission's been instrumental in cheerleading that process.
Woody?
Sam, so what, what, how much does urban renewal give Arts Commission?
Their policy is they provide 2% of their annual budget towards art in their two districts, both the Lake District and River District.
And what happens when the district closes?
Our hope is that the city council will be amenable to taking the funding that we currently receive from that increment and placing it specifically back into the art program.
So when urban renewal ends, it doesn't necessarily stop the cash flow depending on what council wants to do?
That's up to council. So yeah, in four years, the Lake District will expire. There'll be a significant amount of revenue going back to community members, property taxpayers, to various taxing districts, including the city. And we hope that an amount can be set aside to continue to, to fund our, our arts program.
Thank you.
Sam, there are other, there's another source of revenue, correct, into the Arts Commission. There's, so there's from the urban renewal district, and then is it 1% of...
The Percent for the Arts program, yes, sir.
Right, for the public projects. Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Wood, I had already talked to the mayor about that, and it kind of dovetails into what I want to talk about here, which is, in our budget, if we could improve the presentation of the art, right now, it's split into different categories. So there's a maintenance category, there's an urban renewal category, there's art category. If it was, was put as, as more of a cumulative amount, and then the sources were all line items, so we can see the amount that we're generating for art, and we can look at it over the past five years. And that way, a future council can look at what the funding rate has been as a total amount, and then keep it at that level or increase it every year, whatever the council's desire would be. I think that would be a lot easier for us because in the budget right now, you do have that separate item that's urban renewal, and if it was together, then we can track it over time. I think that would make it a lot easier. And I do favor that. I mean, while I favor it going away, but I also favor that when it does go away, that we get a little boost for our, for our citizens in the form of some property tax relief, but also that we can continue to fund the arts program. I think that would be a good thing. Is there, in the new policy, do you have something for grants? Is this going to be, so performing arts, I don't know how we fund performing arts. Usually, when, when I was running a theater, we applied for some grants to do like electrical rewiring, grants from foundations to co-sponsor shows. How is this going to work for performing arts?
Yes, thank you for the question. I wanted to back up real quick regarding the, the budget item.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I apologize, but we, the budget book that we produced does have those kind of big chunks of, of funding. However, we do also produce a line item budget, which does portion it out like that. So you can see that. I'm happy to provide that at any time.
Thank you. Moving on to grants.
Yes, thank you. Related to the arts policy, so what we've done again is we've expanded it to allow for those community partnerships with organizations and facilities. And then what we set up is a request for qualifications process each year for those community partnerships. So each year, there will be a selection committee for whatever pot of funding is budgeted to select those partnerships.
So the council will set a budget for performing arts grants? Is that how it works?
Correct. So each year, the way basically we do it is, the staff works on a, a budget proposal. We bring that to the Arts Commission to see what they think about it, and then they make a recommendation overall to the council and city for that budget, and then you consider it as part of your budget process.
Excellent, I like that. You did mention busking. You mentioned that twice, and I'm going to explain what it is for people who don't know. But a busker is a street performer, someone who stands on the street, maybe puts a hat out or leaves a guitar case open, and it's currently illegal in the city of Coeur d'Alene. So I don't know if you're going to be talking to municipal services about allowing that or not, but I was told, because I had someone asking me about busking, probably the same guy who shows up to the Arts Commission, and I was told that basically, that's considered panhandling under our current ordinance. So if you want to work toward allowing that on the Arts Commission, I think that's something that I would look forward to seeing.
We will be continuing those discussions about those types of opportunities. I'm not sure if I should say it here, but there are First Amendment issues related to whether or not that is illegal or not, and so we'll be working through that.
Very good, thank you.
And then, Sam, on the budget, one of the reasons why you keep it separate for the River District and the Lake District is that any funds that go, say, from the Lake District into the Arts Fund needs to be spent in that district. So that's why those specific things need to be kept separate. Dan?
So can we expect in this budget that we're now working on and will approve later this summer, will there, will these changes show up in that budget? And are you prepared to even give a ballpark of what might be portioned out to these grants?
Yeah, the Arts Commission has reviewed that to make sure that we're in, in line for the good timing, getting back to the finance department. The, the initial budget for those community partnerships is $20,000 for grants. And so that's reviewable, obviously, each year. Since it's the first year moving in, that's the numbers we kind of settled on. It doesn't mean it can't be modified by the council throughout the budget process.
Right, good.
Other questions for Sam? Then, or the question would be looking for council action?
Just a, a point of clarification. So we're, step one is to approve the policy, and then we do the ordinance, and how do those two things relate?
I would defer to the clerk on the order she would appreciate.
So the policy is done via resolution, and because the code is requiring an ordinance, it's a separate motion for each. So you can take them in whichever order you would like. I just placed the resolution first on the agenda.
Weird, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 17-027, Approving Amendments to the Public Art Policy.
Second? Motion and a second, further discussion? I guess the one thing that I would like to add, and we don't have to add it here, but Sam, you and I have had some discussion, we had some discussion at the last council, council workshop, that we would like to try to get some historical preservation education involved in, in that program. I know Boise has a wonderful arts and history program that they have, and so they do have some, some history preservation education in their program. Not saying that we have to do that now because this has all been written and all the homework has been done, but something that we may consider in the future. Wouldn't you agree, Woody?
Mayor, if I may, just to add to that, the, the Arts Commission's current duties and responsibilities do include taking such steps as may be necessary and appropriate to encourage public interest in the cultural heritage of our city and to expand the city's cultural resources. So I think it is part of their mission, and, and that would allow that to move forward.
Okay, all right, thank you. So any further discussion? If not, we would have roll call, please, Renata.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gukin?
Yep.
English?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Yep.
Motion carried.
I'm going to move to dispense with the rule and read Council Bill 17-1014 by title only.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion on that item? If you would read the title, please, Renata.
Council Bill 17-1014, An Ordinance of the City of Coeur d'Alene, Cootney County, Idaho. Amending Sections 1.40.020, 1.40.040, and 1.40050 of Coeur d'Alene Municipal Code, repealing Section 1.40.030 of Coeur d'Alene Municipal Code relating to public art, providing repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing severability, and providing for the publication of a summary and providing an effective date.
Roll call, please.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gukin?
Aye.
English?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion carried. You go.
I move to adopt Council Bill 17-1014.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gukin?
Yep.
English?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Sam?
Thank you.
We will move on to now Public Works, Council Bill Number 17-1015, Approval of the Repeal of Municipal Code 1316010D entitled Designated Within the Sewer Capitalization Fee Chapter. Don Kyle, welcome.
This is that exciting stuff from Public Works. Hey, take it away, Don.
Up, everyone.
Mayor, council, welcome from the worm farm. We have before you a repeal of a particular footnote. Sorry.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. So you, we have before you a repeal of a footnote in the city code that addresses cap fees. We've run into hours and hours of staff time when we, when the footnote is in place, it's brought to us by development, and they, they, they feel like if their flow, their snapshot flow, is different than that's, that's in the, in the categories that we list, that they have the ability to come in and kind of make their own category. That's, that's really incorrect. It's just a little bit of a misreading, and even staff doesn't fully understand the, the, we've had various staff kind of put forward that it might work if they did this, and it just doesn't work. So we have been through three changes on this particular footnote D, and that's three separate rate and cap fee studies. So that's 15 years. The particular item is a little convoluted to show you. It's, I didn't provide a slideshow for this because it's all, it's all printing. So I believe in your package, you were shown that. I can give you a good analogy of why a cap fee is different than a rate. For, for sewer, a category is speaking of a parking lot size. So if we talk about, if Hillary talks about parking lot sizes, there's three categories or so. There's handicap, and there's small cars, and then large cars. So that's the category that we're speaking about. And so this would be like somebody who manufactures a Yugo would present to us that they want their Yugo parking space redefined. So that's, that's kind of how it's taken place. So we want to get back to the basics. By just deleting this does not lose development, any particular category, because it doesn't exist. They have the ability, if they're not in the right category, to come back and, and talk with the, the staff and figure out the right category to put them in. So, so we just simply wanted to clean up the ordinance for the cap fee category.
Questions? Woody?
Don, you used an analogy that kind of, I went, oh, yeah. Use the apartment analogy. Can you explain that?
Sure.
It was going to be bachelors only, I think it was your analogy.
So, so in, in terms of somebody with a, a, a design idea that they can build apartments with a particular look, and the, it would cater to a particular set of individuals in a narrowed range, for instance. We don't find that that particular range would show up as being the average flow because they're, say, they're all males, they would use the restaurants a little more and less home cooking kind of stuff. So, so the analogy is that you can have early in life, a snapshot of very low water use for any apartment. As the apartment ages, however, the flow-reducing fixtures, the count of the people staying in the facility, all play with the, the cap fee. So the cap fee is designed for the apartment, and it's not designed for like three different types of apartments. So it's good for the life, because the cap fee is good for life of the property, we, we struggle with telling the developers that their, their snapshot is not working for the cap fee analysis. So.
Dan? Does that help?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, we, Public Works, we brought this item forward because it was confusing, and we succeeded. So what I would like to do is just explain kind of what I think is going on, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you guys charge two fees. Wastewater charges two fees. So there's a cap fee, which is kind of a connection, and that's based on a use. So storage units would pay probably a smaller cap fee because they're not going to have a lot of water usage, but say, a restaurant would pay a higher fee because when they're connecting to the system, that's more usage. Am I correct?
That's correct.
And so, and then we also have the monthly rates. So you have a rate that we all pay our monthly sewer bills, which for us, residential is based on our water usage because that kind of evens out. But then there's other rates that are charged for other users, so a laundromat's going to be paying a little bit more. And so you have these two separate fees, and if someone changes the purpose of a building and their usage of our system decreases, they can appeal to you guys to get that rate changed. Is that correct?
No, because you use the word rate.
I am confused. decreases, they can appeal to you guys to get that rate changed. Is that correct?
No, because you used the word rate.
I am confused.
So, again, we're talking about the cap fee. And the cap fee is a one-time purchase for the ability to buy in to the wastewater plant that's been paid for by people always using the sewer. So, it's a ticket to be able to use it. That's what the cap fee is. Because they don't freely get to join the club without dues. So...
And then, what we're repealing, though, is the part of the code that was confusing to people, just like me right now, and that allows people to change that based on an appeal because that doesn't change. Am I correct on that?
Council still has the ability to work with the cap fee categories. If the fellow is, the applicant is not feeling like he's comfortably in the right category, he just comes to us, we find out what the next category is. But, we don't want to build a new category.
So, that's what we're fixing?
Yes.
Okay. I knew there was something in there.
I probably confused everybody. Sorry.
But this is why we're fixing it. I mean, this is the, and you can imagine, Don is dealing with people all the time, all over the city, trying to explain this same thing. You can see why if we repeal this, it makes his job a lot easier.
Dan?
Well, just to acknowledge, this is the kind of high-level discussions we have at Public Works Committee. And also, this week, some of the, well, the diligent council members, and I think the mayor, went to a training by the Idaho Association of Cities. And they emphasized the importance of making sure we keep our investment in our infrastructure up. And so, I acknowledge, I mean, this is a confusing bit of language. And I'm trusting that our staff, who have to deal with it, it sounds like it's already, man, if it's taken this much time to do that, and you're recommending it would be better for us to just, you know, get rid of that. And then, if there's a need down the road to regulate something, great. But for now, I think this seems like a good thing to support. So...
Yes, removing regulations. You know, the Republicans should be here instead of at the county.
Yes, two for every one we had, yeah.
Any other questions for Don? So, we would be looking for council action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for, to dispense, oh, wait a minute, dispense the rule. Oh, yeah, I have to dispense the rule of Council Bill 17-1015, once by title only, first.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion on that item? Renata, if you could read the title, please.
Council Bill 17-1015, An Ordinance of the City of Coeur d'Alene, Cootney County, Idaho, Repealing Municipal Code 13.16.010, Subsection D, entitled Designated Within the Sewer Capitalization Fee Chapter, Providing Repeal of Conflicting Ordinances, Providing Severability, and Providing for Publication of a Summary, and Providing an Effective Date.
Roll call, please.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Move to have Council adopt Bill 17-1015.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
English?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
We'll move on to other business. We have Resolution Number 17-028, Approval of the Real Estate Purchase and Sale Agreement with Bad Axe LLC for the Atlas Mill Site Acquisition. Jim?
Your Honor and councilmen, I always feel like I ought to tell a joke or sing a song when I get up here.
Might just go straight to their point.
I did try to dress nice. Tonight, we seek your approval to move forward with an option to purchase the property commonly known as the former Stimson Atlas Mill Site. Both those names are talking about the exact same site. And I want to emphasize that tonight all we're talking about is an option to purchase. Now, this action is predicated on the fact that this property has languished since the mill closed in 2005. It is riverfront property. It's adjacent to a major transportation corridor, and it's a budding river stone. And there, it still sits completely unproductive. The agreed-upon price for this property is 7.850,000. Right now, the only obligation that we will have is to provide $100,000 earnest money to secure that option. Now, if we don't go through with the project, we will get our $100,000 back. Should you approve the opportunity to move forward on this, we will proceed with due diligence and a study of the property over the next four months. Now, that study could include things like public input. What does the public want to see there? Creating scenarios for development of the property that will enhance the city and that pencil that are economically feasible. There are a lot of wonderful things people want to do with that, but economically, they may not make sense. We would want to assess the topography of the site. There are some challenges there with rock and concrete remains that are left at the site. And we want to identify any obstacles we see to development and how we might remediate those obstacles. So, in answer to a question asked earlier, why should the city lead this effort? Because this property may be the last opportunity to provide a public park with riverfront access. The purchase agreement would allow the city to move forward with the annexation and zoning process. This one piece is surrounded by, on both the east and west, or northwest and northeast, on both sides, by property that's in the city. So, we need to get this in the city and get it productive. And with that annexation comes the opportunity for Ignite CDA to expand the river district and the lake district into this property to help with that remediation. I believe that's part of the reason it has not been purchased and no effort has been moving forward to develop it. It's a challenging piece of property. It truly meets what we call the "but-for" principle. But for this help with urban renewal, we may not be able to get anything moving forward. Now, the funds for public amenities, what we hope to do is get a park within this structure, could be generated as some of this property is sold off, which goes to the question, how do we fund it? Well, we hope to partner with Coeur d'Alene, once the property is, with Coeur d'Alene CDA, I always say that wrong, Ignite CDA, once the property is annexed, to help fund the revitalization and development of this property. So, really, the funding source is not the city's funds. It will be urban renewal funds. Now, I want to be clear upfront, though, that if the timing doesn't work right, we may have to borrow from ourselves in the short term because we've got a window in which we need to get all this work done. And we want to close on the date that we've promised. And so, if we can't, what we have to do is we have to get it annexed. And there's timelines to all of that. And then, the Ignite CDA then needs to annex or move, expand their districts into this property so they're able to help with the park and with other remediation efforts, infrastructure, that kind of thing, within this subdivision. So, that's the kind of thing that we will be working on over the next four months. There's the side that, okay, we need to look at this property and see if it's appropriate that we move forward and bring you a recommendation to purchase. And then, there's the other side of making sure that we get the annexation and the district expansion moving so that the financing is ready when we're ready to close. I'm trying to keep it short, and so, I would, that wasn't short? God, kind of. That's it, Your Honor.
Questions for Jim?
I'm sure we have many questions. Dan, have you started off?
Thank you. I will start it off. So, Jim, lots of questions, lots of moving parts on this. On the real estate purchase and sale agreement, it does talk about inspections. And so, though we will get our $100,000 back, how much is our cost of due diligence?
I can't tell you exactly. At this point, most of that will be done internally. We do at some point look to see if we might hire a firm to help us look at how that property might be best used. But also, if we get people very much interested in purchasing the property with the help of the city, then we would work with them on how this property might be developed, and then we would incur no expense.
And again, moving pieces.
Yes.
Government doesn't move swiftly well. And here's a question that I'm sure popped into someone else's head, but not mine. Why doesn't urban renewal just buy it?
Urban renewal can't buy it right now because it's not in the city.
Okay. So, the big-picture plan is that we're going to kind of get the ball rolling here.
Yes.
It is the city's intention to annex it.
Correct.
And zone it. That comes with annexing, annexation. We're going to have part of it as a park, and the rest is going to be developed as a something else with the goal of remediating the property and selling it to generate money to offset the cost. And one of the questions that was asked earlier was about, you know, the expense of us buying it versus how much riverfront property is currently assessed at. So, I would assume, and I know that Chad and others would like to see the whole thing, riverfront access. But somewhere along the line, we're probably going to partner with someone who wants to develop that as houses along the river. Is that just speculation at this point?
Well, actually, that's our desire as well. I can't tell you exactly, but we do see a park over in this area right here with the riverfront access. We do see this part developed over in this part. And we recognize and expect to do the same thing as Chad suggested. That would be used for probably residential development because that would get the highest return on the investment. But again, that all depends on the potential buyer and how they want to use it.
And...
But, I'm sorry.
No, please go ahead.
But the important thing is, we don't intend to consume all this and keep it all in public. We have, I think, Your Honor, we thought, we talked about 15 acres?
Yeah, it's somewhere between 10 and 15 acres.
Somewhere in that area, down in this section here, where, because we chose this section because there's a piece of property that goes all the way, all the way past what you can see down this direction, that we can use for access as well. And we can get access through riverstone into the park very easily. And we want to have enough acreage so we don't have the same problem that these folks have with the Johnson Mill Park and that there's not sufficient parking. We want to make sure that there's sufficient parking and access to this park.
And one of the reasons that it hasn't been developed in this manner is because it's, I'm guessing, I don't know, property. Maybe you could help me, Mr. Mayor. But there's, it's big. And so, anyone who's going to do this needs a very big investment. They probably need big backers and a lot of planning and a lot of help, too, to get it done. But we can purchase it. And then, the goal is to hand it over to urban renewal, and we keep our chunk, they help us develop that, and then they will go ahead and process the rest, which raises another concern because I don't think they've ever handled anything like this before. So, are they going to be calling in some experts to help them do development? Or is that our job?
It's not our job, but it's our intent to work with urban renewal, to bring in somebody that can advise us on how best to develop that property. There are some challenges in development. It's not a nice, flat piece of property that's easily developed. So, we will need some, we probably need some outside expertise that we can get some advice from on how we might best utilize that property and get the most for our investment.
Okay. I want it to be successful. So, I'm hoping, you know, we're talking speed here, and we're talking a lot of moving pieces. And I want to make sure that nothing goes sideways on it. And one of the things that I'm a stickler for is Article 8, Section 3, which says that we can't incur a tremendous amount of debt over time without a vote of the people. And so, explain to me how we're not going to be on the hook for the $7 or $8 million purchase price.
We will never be on the hook for that long-term because, first of all, if we don't want to buy it, if you don't want to buy it, it won't be purchased and we'll get our $100,000 back. But long-term, the Urban Renewal Agency, Ignite Coeur d'Alene, will be the one that's purchasing the property, and they have the resources to be able to buy that. I don't think they're going to have to incur any debt either to buy that property.
If I understand the code correctly, this would be a plan modification.
I'm sorry.
This is a plan modification for both districts.
Yes, it is.
Which has to go by us. So, we do have control over the process at that point in that we can stipulate that we want specific things done as opposed to just saying, do whatever.
Right.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
One of the things, Dan, is that the reason why it would be very short-term is if we aren't able to expand the districts. We basically have five months and 23 days to expand the river district and create the urban renewal that's going to provide the funding for this. All of those things have deadlines and timing, and those things take time. If we hit every single one of those, we can probably reach that October 25th. But there may be a hiccup in there that doesn't cause us to be able to complete, if we decide to buy it, the expansion of the urban renewal district, which we can see that there's $150,000 advantage if we close it on October 25th versus December 1st. So, there's an advantage to get it closed on that date. So, if the urban renewal process is not completed by that date, the city may have to step in for a short period of time until all of the urban renewal expansion work is done. At that time, the urban renewal would pay back the city. So, this is a very short-term, short-term financing, if it's necessary.
And it's important to answer your concern about incurring debt. We would not be incurring debt. We have internal funds, so we'd really, in essence, be borrowing from ourselves on a short-term basis.
But then, those things, you know, we've got four and a half months to do that due diligence. And those are things that we'll come back and have solid answers for the council on. Woody?
Jim, you were talking about some history on this, why it sat for so long. And didn't the railroad right-of-way have a part of that?
Certainly, it was an obstacle that concerned people because the property was split to a lower and an upper section by that railroad property, which it's still split even though we own it.
Thanks.
Other questions for Jim? Kiki?
I just had a question on this timeline again. So, the annexation of it, the zoning of it, and a development plan of it, and all the due diligence has to be done within a five-month, 23-day window on the outside, all of that part? Or am I getting...
No, you're correct. That's what we're going to attempt to do, move forward that quickly. It is possible. We just have to hustle.
Yeah. Okay. And then, my other thing, when we were talking about urban renewal, Dan, you probably know the answer to this one. But does this reset, the reset trigger for Ignite come into play when they expand the district to try to do this?
No, it does not.
Further questions for Jim? Ron?
Yeah, Jim, is there any way that the city could get screwed?
On the hook?
Uh-huh.
On the hook?
Yeah.
That's why we want to do the due diligence before we make the purchase. And we will make sure that you need to, we need to make sure that we do the due diligence to assure you that there is no way we're going to get on the hook, or the other expression you used.
Okay. You're going to be working on this?
I am going to be working on this. Troy's going to be working on this. The mayor's going to be working on this. Sam's going to be working on it. And we've got some councilmen and some urban renewal folks. We've got a large group of folks that will be putting in some time on this.
Kiki, did you have another question?
I did. I just had one other thing. When you referred to the "we see this being developed in such and such a way," so, to date, it's... developed in such and such a way," so to date, it's really just been staff and council and Ignite. Has there been public input on how they wanna see this developed to date?
There will be a public input. That's a part of the outreach that we'll do in the due diligence phase.
But to date, we haven't done that piece.
Oh, I'm sorry, no.
Any other questions? I guess I wish to add that one of the reasons why, when we talk about, why does a city need to step forward and do this, and we have, for a while now, sat back and waited for the private sector, and there have been several groups that have had the property in contract, but it comes down to, anytime a developer buys a piece of property, there's some risk to it. And there were several unanswered questions for the developer that could not be answered for them to pull the trigger on the purchase. It was that the annexation, the zoning, you see that the city owns all of, right now, the city owns all of that right-of-way that goes through there. There, to develop that piece of property, there has to be a significant amount of land trading to be able to do that. There's also, we don't believe that it's a brownfield, and I think we've debated on what a brownfield is and isn't, but we feel that that site is fairly environmentally safe. But we need to dig in and get the bottom line on that. But we have seen developers come and go and not be able to pull the trigger, because there's so many unanswered questions. Right now, this piece of property returns zero tax dollars to the city of Cordillane. Zero. We feel that if we can create a public-private partnership, and again, and Mr. Moser was right, that the city is not a land developer. But I think what we do is we listen to our constituents, and there are some constituents, and if you look at the 2030 study, of which we do a lot, it says that one of the primary things that's important to the citizens of Cordillane is public access to the water. So we can provide public access to the water. And I've just done some very quick math on this. This isn't rocket science, but I believe that through the public-private partnership, we can get that public access to the water. We can get a great public park, and we can create $100 million or more in taxable value to the city of Cordillane, where now, we get zero taxes on this piece of property. And we don't know when that could become into the city if we don't pull the trigger, and if we don't take the lead on this. If we can get that, and it's gonna be five to 10 years, maybe even longer, to get to that $100 million. Could happen faster than that, but that's gonna return a million and a half dollars of taxes to the city of Cordillane. And I think that, developed correctly, we could say that the million and a half dollars, it's, that piece of property's not gonna take a million and a half dollars' worth of services. So that million and a half dollars can be used in whatever a growing city's needs are to keep the tax burden level for everyone. And in a growing city, that's the challenge, of keeping the tax burden level. So, a tremendous opportunity here. I think in talking with city admin and talking with some members of the Ignite Board, we've talked about it in city council, we really think that we should take the lead on this. And by taking the lead, we need to do four and a half months' worth of homework. There's gonna be a lot of work and a lot of questions along the way. We don't have all the answers tonight, and we don't have all the questions. But over the next four and a half months, we will. So I just think it's an important step for the city to take. And this, when we look at Urban Renewal and what Urban Renewal has done in the city of Cordillane, it's created all the taxable value in Riverstone. It's created all of the taxable value in Mill River, two vacant mill sites. It's created the educational corridor, which we believe is going to be built out in 10 to 15 years. Matter of fact, starting next year, we're gonna see a new building on the educational corridor. So that's, Urban Renewal's purpose is to remediate blight, and we have plenty of old mill sites in this area to remediate. And I just think that it's, overall, it's gonna be a good project. It'll be a lot of work, but we're hoping in the end it's successful. So there's a big, long speech for you. Dan?
Well, I would just say, this is a very unique opportunity. I am very supportive of taking a look at it, and I certainly hope and expect it will go all the way. This isn't a new concept, or in terms of, you know, a handful of people that are interested, and it's kind of a Johnny-come-lately idea. I mean, I can speak from personal experience that, you know, at least as long as I can remember, so, I mean, we're talking a half a century, that, from living here, being here, that people have expressed a desire for more waterfront access in whatever form that might take. So, you know, I have complete confidence that this is in line with at least a good portion of our citizens, and it'd be a terrible thing to not at least pursue it.
Any other questions for Jim? If not, we'd be looking for council action.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we would approve Resolution 17028, which is approving a real estate purchase and sale agreement with Bad Axe LLC, love that, for the Atlas Mill Site or Atlas Stimson, for that piece of property.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Renata?
Gookin?
Oh, you betcha.
English?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you very much, everyone, for the work on that. We will move now to, we have a public hearing. This is a legislative hearing. It's the approval of the conveyance of government-way right-of-way property to Lakes Highway District, the city of Hayden, and the city of Dalton Gardens. And we have a sign-up sheet for anyone that wishes to speak on this item. I got all my friends signed up. Every single one of my friends have signed up.
Where is it?
This is so entertaining. Sam to the rescue.
Let's see if that, there we go. You know, this always makes good TV, watching some guy fumble around.
No, it's not some guy. It's always you.
Not always. But I'm learning. Control L.
I need to go get some water.
Give everybody a chance to segue or take a break from that last exciting item.
I don't want you to make me feel bad, Mike, but everybody's left.
I was kinda hurt when I saw the sign-up sheet looked exactly like it did three hours ago, zero people. But, so this has been before you before.
Can we leave, Your Honor?
No, not yet.
And this is, we're going through the process that is required by state law for us to divest ourselves or convey property. This is property we acquired as the sponsor for the government-way project, widening road project. And it's right-of-way that is not in the city limits. It's right-of-way property that is in the city of Dalton Gardens, the city of Hayden, and in Lakes Highway District. In the county, but Lakes Highway District has control of right-of-way. And so, we're here tonight to hear from the public if they have any opposition or support for us to convey this property from our ownership to those other organizations. We acquired this using grant money, federal grant money, so we didn't, we're not losing any money out of this deal. But it is property that is appropriate or lies within the other jurisdictions outside our city limits. So, it basically runs from, the first part of the government-way project went from Dalton Avenue to Hanley, and that's been completed. And so, we need to convey the property on the east side of Government Way to Dalton Gardens. And then, the next project, or the next phase that I think starts in a couple weeks, we're gonna open bids, last I heard, will be from Hanley to Prairie, and that will be the end of our project. And Councilman Gookin could probably explain a lot of this from the KMPO perspective. But anyway, it will take place, and so, it's time for us to convey this property. This shows the property on the side from Dalton to Hanley, and this shows property from Hanley to Prairie. This is the bit that is in Hayden, and then we have some in Lakes here that is, so.
Okay, questions for Mike? Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanna clarify. So, we get the federal grant money. We're not buying the land from these other agencies. We bought it from private property owners.
Right.
So we can make the road wider there.
Right.
And then, since we were the, we're the lead on the project, we're the ones who are kind of managing it, but we're working with the other people. So we're done, when we're done, property's not in the city of Cordillane. It's not even bordering the city of Cordillane. We have to give our right-of-way back to these other agencies, and that's the formal process we're in.
Right. And we're, Cordillane's sort of the big brother for the other smaller entities. We have staff that can steward a project like this. You know, one of the byproducts, or one of the things we're doing that I think is noteworthy, is we are allowing the commercial zone in Dalton Gardens to hook onto Cordillane Sewer. What does that mean? It means that there's not, it's a bunch more septic tanks are being taken off the aquifer. So that's a good thing environmentally. So, and it will help that area develop, I think. So, it's good for that community.
Any other questions for Mike? This is a legislative hearing, and we do need to open the public comment portion of that, so we will do that now. I do not have anyone on the list to give a public comment. Anyone wishing to do so in the audience? I don't see any. So now, we will close the public comment part of it, and we will look for council action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of Resolution 17029, 17030, and 17031, approving agreements of land conveyance with Lakes Highway District, city of Hayden, and city of Dalton Gardens.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
English?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Aye.
Motion carried. We now have Council Bill Number 17-1016, conveying right-of-way title to certain real property located in the city of Dalton Gardens.
That seems kinda funky.
So, now what do we do there?
So, Mr. Mayor, I would like to move to dispense with the rule of Council Bill 171016, by title only.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'd just say it's weird, 'cause it's like, normally, it's within the city of Cordillane, and now we're, we're in Dalton. Hello?
Taking care of our neighbors.
Renata, if you could read the title, please.
I will, and there's two more to follow. So this might sound repetitive, but this is a requirement that we treat each one separately.
All right.
So Council Bill Number 171016, "An Ordinance of the City of Cordillane Conveying Right-of-Way Title to Certain Real Property Located in the City of Dalton Gardens, Cootney County, Idaho, Repealing All Ordinances and Parts of Ordinances in Conflict Here With, Providing a Severability Clause, and Providing for the Publication of a Summary of This Ordinance and an Effective Date Hereof."
Roll call, please.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
English?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yep.
Motion carried. Looking for a motion?
Motion to adopt Council Bill 171016.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second, sorry.
We have a motion to adopt Council Bill Number 17-1016. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Aye.
English?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yep.
Motion carried. Now, we have Council Bill Number 171017, conveying right-of-way title to certain real property located in the city of Hayden.
Move to dispense with the rule and read Council Bill 171018, once by title only.
Second.
That was 101017, right? Woody?
17, oh, I'm jumping ahead, sorry.
So 1...
17.
Yeah, there you go.
Got that?
So we have a motion and a second. Renata, if you could read the title, please.
Council Bill Number 171017, "An Ordinance of the City of Cordillane Conveying Right-of-Way Title to Certain Real Property Located in the City of Hayden, Cootney County, Idaho, Repealing All Ordinances and Parts of Ordinances in Conflict Here With, Providing a Severability Clause, and Providing for the Publication of a Summary of This Ordinance and an Effective Date Hereof."
Roll call, please.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
English?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion to adopt Council Bill 171017.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Star Trek numbers.
It is? Roll call, please.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
English?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion carried. Now, we have Council Bill Number 17-1018, conveying right-of-way title to certain real property located in Lakes Highway District.
I move to dispense with the rule and read Council Bill Number 17...
Second.
Motion and a second. Renata, if you could read the title, please.
Council Bill 17-1018, "An Ordinance of the City of Cordillane Conveying Right-of-Way Title to Certain Real Property Located in Lakes Highway District, Cootney County, Idaho, Repealing All Ordinances and Parts of Ordinances in Conflict Here With, Providing a Severability Clause, and Providing for the Publication of a Summary of This Ordinance and an Effective Date Hereof."
Roll call, please.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
English?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Move to adopt Council Bill 17-1018.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call again, please.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yeah.
English?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Mike. Now, we're going to move on to legislative hearing, amendments to city fees, including public parking violations and other department fees. Are you exhausted, Renata, or are you up for the challenge? Can you, can you pull this off?
I can pull it together.
Okay.
It'll bring us home. The Idaho Code requires that if we're gonna adopt new fees or increase our fees in 5% or more, it requires a public hearing. I have a few in front of you tonight from the Administration Department. We have several parking violation amendments. We have one that takes the general violation from $15 to $25, as well as providing a tiered system of parking longer than allowable limits. Additionally, we have clarified that violations in all the other parking zones. The Municipal Services Department has worked with the Downtown Association, the Chamber of Commerce, and several of the large event sponsors, and have come to an agreement of a agreeable 20% increase in the cost of our special event and street closure fees. Additionally, there are several violations for municipal codes. Throughout our code, it's like one general administrative section that provides a fee for violation, and it just is more simplistic to put it within the code sections themselves. So you'll see several $100 violation fees listed there. The Parks Department has requested that the trail user fee move from 50 cents to $1 to bring it more in alignment with maintenance costs and collecting those fees. I stand for questions.
Questions for Renata?
Renata, I have one. On the centennial trail use, how is the activity trail use fee collected?
You know, it's a really good question for Monte McCully, who I don't see in the audience tonight. So I'm assuming that when they pull their request for a permit to use the trail, that they collect it at that time.
Okay.
Other questions for Renata? Dan?
Well, I have a question, just have a comment. Thank you for raising those parking fees. I mean, they were just ridiculously low, and I've been grousing about that for a long time, that, you know, it's often just cheaper to get the parking ticket than it is to go find a place where you have to pay anyway. So, thanks.
And I think that the first-ticket courtesy warning is gonna be a popular feature, so we kind of offset by giving that, those people a break on the first time with increasing the fees on the...
So, how soon are you gonna use your first free one?
Oh, I'm, I'm past the free ones.
You are.
Yeah, I've used that.
Move for adoption of Resolution 17-032.
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call, please. Renata?
Gookin?
Aye.
English?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I would move, Mr. Mayor, that we enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74206C, which is to acquire an interest in real property which is not owned by a public agency, and Idaho Code 74206A sub-A, to consider a labor contract offered to formulate a counteroffer, and subsection B, receiving information about a specific employee where the information has a direct bearing on the issues being negotiated, and a reasonable person would conclude that the release of that information would violate that employee's right to privacy.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further...